Dillon County Monthly Meet. I'd like to start out by saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Buzz, you can say them in case court.
Good job. We thank you for this great day. And we thank you for living in a country where we can come and talk openly about government affairs and do what's right for the people of Dillon County. Please bless us and lead us and guide us. In Jesus' name I pray.
I also like to welcome Mr. Jerome McLeod, newly elected councilman.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Number three, approval of the agenda. Needs a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion? Need a second?
Second.
A second? All in favor? Any opposed? Number four, approval of minutes. January 12th, 18, called meeting. January 24th, 18, regular meeting. January 30th, 18, called meeting. Requires a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion? Need a second? I'll say it. A second? All in favor? Any opposed? Number five, public hearing. A, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Dillon County, South Carolina, and the company or companies known to the county at this time as project in need with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such property will be subject to certain payment in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related there. B, an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park of Dillon and Marble Counties so as to enlarge the park. C, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract to sell and convey approximately 12.78 acres of land with improvements thereon as shown on a platte recorded in the office of the clerk of court of Dillon County in platte book 28, page 143, TMS 040-00-00-032, for the amount of $452,000, and authorizing the conveyance of said 12.78 acres pursuant to the term of the said contract. Number six, new business. A, Department Head and Employees of the Month.
Mr. Chairman, would you join me down as we celebrate some folks? This is the fun part of our agenda. So often, we don't tell folks enough how we appreciate them and encourage them. A lot of times, especially in county businesses, "Did you do that? Did you do this?" We've got some great folks working with us. And we're going up, we go to Department Head, and we've got two Employees of the Month that we're going to recognize this time. Come on up here, Susie, as Department Head. We know you worked hard yesterday and still working to certify. And we appreciate you. This is a little bulldog right here. She'll tell you like it is, and we appreciate all the work that you've done. Stevie will do that. We sure appreciate everything you do.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Penguin, would you ask Winn or Miller to come in here, please, sir? Would you ask Winn or Miller?
Winn.
Is she coming here? Come on, Winn, well. You're not in trouble. Go on. Winn is another one that works very hard for us. During the FEMA, the day I started to work was when Matthew hit us. And there was so much work to be done. But this is the lady that we got all our reimbursements from. And I can't recall it was better than a half a million dollars that we received back in reimbursements. And thank you for all that you did, okay?
Thank you, Miss Winn.
Now I need Lisa.
What are we doing? Nelson, do it while you're in here.
Yes, you are. Come on in, Lisa. This lady here, in my opinion, has been underutilized for years. In the last two weeks, I've asked an awful lot of her. Not only has she stepped up and accomplished all that, but she's gone beyond and above. We thank you for all your work that you've done for many years with the county. But I'm certainly very appreciative in the last two weeks.
Thanks, Mrs. Lisa.
Thank you.
Six B, Dillon Christian School, Skies of 1A State Champions. I'd like to congratulate, Dillon County congratulates the Dillon Christian School Warriors on their Skies of 1A State Championship win. This is actually back-to-back. Congratulations, fellas. Good job.
Appreciate it.
I'll do recognize you.
Another great job. Thank you. Thank y'all for the recognition. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank y'all for coming. And six C, Dillon High School, State 3A Champions. Dillon County congratulates Dillon High School Wildcats on a 3A State Championship win. Thank you, fellas. Coaches, players, great job. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to commend you and the council for supporting recreation football with Dillon. All these guys started out there in the County Recreation League, and it plays a integral part of what we're trying to do and try to grow them up and play with the big boys. We appreciate y'all's support with that. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. I do a good job. Six D, recreational quiz.
Okay, we have one from Riverdale Softball Team. They are asking for donations to help offset the cost of playing ball. They will travel to compete with going for expenses, and they need your assistance in helping with toys, bats, etc. Archie Scott's giving a hundred. Does anybody else want to give anything to the Riverdale Softball Team? I then we have one from Antonio Vault. He is asking for donation for his upcoming AAU Summer Basketball traveling team. This year, we'll be traveling to different locations to include Georgia, Florida, North Carolina, Washington DC, and surrounding areas. The program is built around teaching kids leadership skills, communication skills, teamwork concept, and turning boys into men through basketball. And he's asking for your help in this. Archie's giving a hundred.
I'm gonna give him a hundred.
The next one is from the Riverdale Green. She said that A&R Photography is dedicated to reducing equality in professional pageant. A&R's goal is to teach friendly competition and positive self-confidence. A&R will be hosting a pageant March 10th, 2018, and they're asking for your support by sponsoring a child or two. Archie is giving a hundred. The next one we have is Humane Society of Dillon County. This is their third year in a row that three groups of animal advocates have joined forces in an effort to save the lives of many heartwormed positive dogs at the Dillon County Animal Shelter. A heartwormed positive diagnosis ends a sheltered dog to a slow painful death. A sheltered dog suffers from heartworms has almost no hope of ever leaving the shelter alive. But the Dillon County Animal Shelter staff, Friends Helping the Dillon County Animal Shelter, and the Humane Society of Dillon County are working together to fund fast kill medical treatment for the worms that infect these dogs. So they're asking that y'all give a donation to this. And then we have one for the Relay for Law for Dillon County. We're giving cancer the boot in 2018. Cancer never sleeps, so for 12 hours neither will we. We're going to walk all over cancer. Join us Saturday, June 2nd, 2018, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. at the Dillon Motor Speedway, Dillon, South Carolina. Okay, and the last one we have is Fort Chapel Baptist Church. This is from Miss Josephine Gilchrist. She said that the Fort Baptist, Fort Chapel Baptist Church Gala Committee is once again asking council for donation. Our black and white gala is a yearly event that helps to fund the church. She's asking for a $50 donation from each member to help with our building fund.
Fifty if I get it.
Thank you. Okay, and Stevie, you had one for the, um...
Bicycles.
Kid, the bicycles for kids of incarcerated parents.
Yes.
And you want to give how much to that one? A hundred? That's all I have at this time, man.
All right. Requires a motion? Got a second? Got a motion and a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Six E, Advanced Drainage System Incorporated.
This is for the pipes for roads and bridges that are used, put under the road for drainage. They're used to buy by truckload. Just look through sheets, see what pipe he's ordering. The total bid amount was $14,926.95. They used to build a single source on this one, Buzz, that's this pipe. This pipe just holds up better and works better, although...
Requires a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this first.
Got a motion, need a second?
I'll say it.
Got a second? All in favor? Any opposed? F, Job Retention Services, Andrea M. Faye is on care.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrea M. Faye and I am here to talk to you guys today about job retention services. I currently work for South Carolina Vocational Leadership. How many people have ever heard of that? A lot of times, people think about book rehab as those working with people that have physical impairments, but they don't know about our job retention services. What that program's all about is helping people retain the employees that they already have and helping the employee retain his employee. What job retention services does is if you have that employee that maybe having some issues, if you notice that they maybe having issues with their back, if you notice that they're missing a lot of work, if they don't have their medication for diabetes, things of that nature, what we do is we come in, if they're having physical impairments, we have a division called, we have technology that will come in and assist them with the items that they need at low cost to them to put it, for they can continue to do their job without sore or without, okay? If the employee doesn't allow the service, comes to the division to come in, they will talk one-on-one with the employee to find out what equipment is needed for them. If they're having issues as far as medical is concerned, we do cover that as well, helping them make sure they have their medications. We pay for up to two months of medication, plus keep them situated with what they may need till the labor team is able to get their meds. And so they will go with this. We do a whole lot of other things as well. We do have a training center for different disabilities. We do work evaluations and things of that nature, but that's just one service that we need to talk about a little bit more. I don't think a lot of people really know about job retention services. So if you have any employees that you're noticing that are having some kind of problems completing their jobs, completing them effectively, please don't hesitate to refer them to the local area. We're located at 309 North First Avenue here in Dillon. I do have some cards and if you want to call out, I can leave them just the area so that you got them.
Just for a motion? Got a motion? All right, six G, Check to Lakeview Recreation.
I think you probably have a check. Matthew's here. We'll get to check to Lakeview is $10,000 for the recreations, was the request, right, Matthew? We'll get that to you. Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Six, six H, Vios for Cool Tower and Corn House.
You have a question?
Yeah, I got it. Um, I guess the Cool Tower, all this cold weather, the pipes froze. Good thing it's going to be covered by insurance, all of that $1,000, hoping for. We got three bids. First bid is Case. The bid is $68,200 to replace the Cool Tower. Hoffman Mechanical Solutions, they're out of Greensburg. They'll bid with $60,345. We've got another bid from Industrial Air Incorporated at $78,000. And they'll bid with Hoffman Mechanical Solution at $60,345.
Question, what are they going to do with their bid?
Our saving grace now is that the weather has cooled down. I mean, we don't, we don't have any plans to do anything. We're going to, the minute y'all approve the request, we'll order it first thing in the morning, I think it's about three or four weeks. We're just kind of watching the weather. I've had one complaint up there so far, but that was during the 80-degree weather, so...
Not going to get that hot again in three or four weeks.
Yeah, well, we just need to kind of watch the weather. We're at the mercy, that was kind of an act of God there.
How much is the system going to pay on?
They'll pay around $65,000, so we pretty much got it, got it off.
Mr. Bear, you may or may not know the answer to this. Did I hear, Richard, did you say that those tubes froze and burst?
Yes, and Cool Tower.
Well, I have a question. We know there's water in there, and they have all kinds of chemicals. And we switched pump these several years ago because we weren't satisfied with the performance of the people that were doing the treatment on the water treatment. Why don't they put antifreeze in those pipes? Because Mike, I know that you're not an engineer, but I don't understand something that expensive and that large wouldn't have antifreeze of some sort or some chemical in it to keep it from freezing.
I know the, the new one goes in, it has a way, if it typically gets so low, it all the back is re-carpalated to keep them from freezing.
Why don't we call the people who are in charge of that and ask them that question, if you don't mind, why those pipes froze? I am real curious why this system would freeze when...
Yeah, I guess they probably don't put antifreeze in there if they got, because this was supposed to have a gauge on it, if it drops down, I guess below freezing, that water automatically starts to circulate.
So you think it's a malfunction then, instead of...
Well, this, that one's probably 20, 30 years old. I guess they probably improved technology on it.
Okay, but I would like to answer that question, if you guys want to check.
Need a motion?
Most of this time, it's charity week, except Louis P. will be offering $65,345.
Got a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, six I, Capital Sales Tax Money and Greater Ladder Area.
What's the amount we've got to that designated account, Richard?
Mr. Chairman, about five years ago, when I got elected on the council, we had some infrastructure money left, left over from I-95, 38, project out, that's where we bought some land and stuff. And the council voted to let us use it in the larger area for infrastructure. And we spent, it was supposed to be $900,000, and over the last four, five years, we spent all of it except $173,261. I've had some big problems with the sewer and water, and they were lucky, they got the 2.6 billion ugly grant, and they're fixing to get started this summer, working. But in the meantime, they have a bunch of engineering fees and that kind of stuff, where they didn't have a lot of money, and they're asking for that money, $173,261. We have two councilmen here today, Brian Dyson and Jared Taylor. Jared Taylor's the acting administrator for town lots. Do you have anything you'd like to say, Jared?
Not unless the council has any questions. If the council has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer you.
Mr. Buzz, will that money be used for what?
It's going to be used to help them with the sewer and water, which is, it's going to really be a drop in the budget, but it would be a big help to them right now, getting started. I'd like to make a motion to give it to kind of...
Second? Motion, got a second? All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Six J, Purchased Baco for landfill.
This one, that item was in the budget on capital expenditures. We work a paper with Geo Bond, but the baco we had caught on fire, the insurance company, I'm not sure, but figured they'd give us, we'll pay for it, $58,000 toward it. I think on a budget line item, we had $96,500. The one we're buying is actually $95,000, but we need about $5,000 for the soldering tires. So the total purchase would be about $100,000.
You get how much from the insurance company?
About $58,000.
And how much you lined up for?
$96,500.
So total is about $100,000.
Yes, for the baco in the lot of time.
Requires a motion?
I have a question.
Yeah?
So I'm a digger, what are you asking for?
Actually, a bit less money, because we weren't, we're planning, planning on buying a new one. We weren't counting on the insurance from the one that's burned.
So it's not going to cost the county next?
No, it's not.
Prior to motion? Make a motion there.
I made a motion.
All right. I need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Six K, Statewide Mutual Aid Agreement for Emergency and Disaster Response. This is for next.
Mr. Chairman, I'm here today to ask the county, to county council, to sign the statewide mutual aid agreement before we have a disaster. Statewide mutual aid agreement that's already been signed by the Town of Ladder, Town of Lakeview, and City of Dillon. That statewide mutual aid agreement, what it does in the event we have a disaster, give us our support from the entire state, whether it's law enforcement, fire department, EMS, regardless, but the county attorney has to sign that and has to scan the system center to stop the emergency.
There's an original up there. I've looked over it, and it simply, again, allows us to get mutual aid if we need it, but also to provide a, in the area that may need it in the event.
That's pretty much like a mutual agreement.
Exactly. Exactly the same thing it is. That's sure, so I'm tied around.
Anybody got any questions?
I make the motion that we, uh, who Mr. Moses, I call it mutual agreement, what he's talking about.
You got a motion, need a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Seven, Own Business. Eight, Fire Insurance Billing.
Mr. Chairman, y'all asked us to, we had a conversation on this several months ago. We were asked to revisit this, so Moses is going to update you with its information on the fire insurance billing. And also, an element of that is probably securing an outside company like we do with EMS to actually get a billing. But I think Moses has got a meeting scheduled for, or that's underway, but you got a little bit more.
Yes. Mr. Chairman and the council, I'm here today to ask Dillon County Council to give us permission to build the insurance company for automobiles and structured insurance. Dillon County Fire Department will be required to get all the insurance information as part of the report. A copy of that report is in the folder I just gave all the councilmen. There's a car, a structure fire, the county fire department can request the necessary information from the owner before the fire report's released. In the county now, if somebody has a structure fire, car fire, they come down to any of the fire department, and they request a report. Before we give them a report, we would require them to give us the homeowner's insurance. One of the things, Dillon County total car fire last year from January 1, 2000, January 1, 2018, 2017... uh, January one of two thousand eighteen, from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, we had a total of nine, two hundred and ninety-six fires. We had nine hundred and something fires, but a great deal of them were grass fire, but two hundred and ninety-six of them were structure fire. One of Dillon County Fire Chief was in there before you all, uh, on four twelve, two thousand seventeen. I'm here today to continue the fire department, uh, process. Insurance company have policies in places for reimbursement. Uh, you know Moses Hayward? This is a copy from my own insurance policy. On that page, you don't have that, but it tells you that the fire department, this is from Travis Insurance Company, fire department service charge, we will pay under five hundred dollars for your liability. Basically, what we're trying to do is get to receive some of the reimbursement for the fire department costs. We take a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar engine out there to a scene, they stay out there two hours, if five hundred dollars is available to Dillon County, that would help. So I'm here today to ask the councilmen, will they, uh, agree on us, uh, getting this information, so we can start building the fire insurance. I've contacted two companies, uh, one called Covenant Solution, also Mobile and Country, which EMS uses right now, and all we'd have to do is meet with them and start the process.
If somebody's house or mobile home burning, they can't afford insurance, they don't have any insurance, we're not gonna build it?
We not gonna build it. Won't be no gain. But if my house burned, or yours, chances are, you got insurance and I have too, kinda won't get five hundred dollars out of my insurance company. We just helping the taxpayers.
You understand? Requires motion?
Make that motion, Mr. Chairman, approve the Dillon process.
I think so.
Yes, sir.
Well, the homeowner refused to give it to you.
We don't give them that report. They got, they want that report.
I guess you could, if they got insurance, you could always build.
We can build the homeowner.
The homeowner, to that here.
That report will have that information on it, and that's part of the filling out process. If they don't give it to us, well, you can't close it, but we can build it. Yeah, this is, this is growing all over the world, so other companies are doing it.
That the person that you're saying, if I'm not mistaken, this also will help us offset the cost.
Offset the cost. I've spoken to, uh, like Walzerburg, I've spoken to them, and it, sometimes it's not a lot of money, but at two-hundred, ninety-six fires, if you figure two-hundred fires, and we get reimbursement for two-hundred fires, it could be considerable amount of money coming back to the fire department. You take an engine out there and ten volunteer firefighters, sometime you may use foam, solution, sometime, uh, they may stay out there hour, hour and a half.
I think it's a William Lynn situation, it's a county, it'll cost the homeowners anything.
No, if you don't have insurance, we move on to the next.
That's right. Insurance companies are gonna, we could be everything through the premium, they charge people in the United States.
It's it, it's, go home and look in your policy notice, in.
Motion, need a second?
Got a second?
All in favor? Any vote?
Thank you, Mr. Most.
All right, nine, administrator report, no, excuse me, eight, finance report.
Okay, uh, right now, my general fund account, we got three million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. Uh, our accounts payable outstanding is six hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. Least for the net amount, the spend is two million, four hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Nine, administrator report.
Mr. Chairman, council, I got just a couple items here, I'd like to update you all. Uh, A, our second annual employee party will be March twenty-seventh, out at the Wellness Center, uh, the folks in the city have gave us that venue gratis. Derek Weeks will be cooking, and the chicken's been donated by Purdue, which we're very grateful for. Charles Taylor's now in the process of getting prizes throughout the community, did a great job. We gave away a lot of great prizes to all our employees, uh, last year, so put that on your calendar, March twenty-seventh. Uh, B, our budget workshop, we've taken it, uh, upgraded to the level this year, we're gonna go offsite, the Buckhead Ranch, that facility also has been giving us gratis for, for three days. Uh, we carved out time for each. Apartment head will come in and talk about the budget process. Richard, uh, myself, Robbie, and Jamie will be out there, uh, that first day, on the thirteenth, and, uh, kind of get down and dirty with that. Our apartment heads have a SWOT analysis due to us, Friday, strength, weakness, opportunity of threats, uh, so we'll analyze a lot of things. Budget this year, we're looking to do more of a three-year strategic plan to look a little bit beyond, we've got so much activity, I, I just deemed that necessary. Uh, we'll, we'll, uh, finish on the fifteenth at twelve with you folks out there, and we'll do a budget workshop. We'll present to you, uh, preliminary, look at the budget at that time, and get your input then. Number C, Ellen Port update. Uh, most of you know, we have a weekly conference call happening for the last, oh, six months. Every week, we have it with the, uh, leadership of the port and also Harbor Freight. Uh, you might have read an article just recently that, that port has been going beyond the anticipated budget, uh, I think around about fifty million. Some of that was because of some CSX work, but also they realized, it doesn't take much to notice, our roads are really taking up pounding, these back roads, it really wasn't made to, to handle the loads that it's currently carrying, so, uh, some of that money's, has been allotted at that way. SEDR2 has really stepped into play with us in a, in a lot of ways, but, uh, they're still on target, April first. Uh, our work, our obligations, which is industrial park road, and we're part of Fairfield because the CTC kicked money in for us, and it's our engineer that's, that's doing that work. Uh, I, they formally won't say that we'll meet the deadline of April first, we've calculated out beyond that, but, uh, I, I'm very optimistic that we will make those deadlines. We're making alternate routes in case we don't make it, but all seems to be doing pretty well there. Uh, D, special presentation, we have a young lady amongst us that got certified in record time with the county association, and that will be our beloved Jamie Sue, and so we have a plaque here for her, come on up, Jamie Sue. But, uh, Jamie Sue was, Jamie Sue was admired by her, her, uh, equals and the amount of time that she took to, to get certified. She worked very hard on that, as you all noticed.
So congratulations, Jamie Sue Stevens, on your completion of the Cyclonic Certified Council Association Certification Program. Ms. Stevens presented her certificate at the SCCCA Annual Winter Conference, February third, two thousand and eighteen, hip head. Jamie Sue worked diligently and has completed the required curriculum and met the standards established by the SCCCA for certification. She now qualifies for participation in the advanced certification program, which provides additional professional development opportunities for clerks who have attained certification. Great job, Jamie Sue.
Very, very committed employee. Uh, just two more items, Mr. Chairman. I'll be going on a recruiting trip with NISA to Canada, March eighteenth through the twenty-second. Uh, the good news is, is NISA's done all the lead generation work, so those four days, we'll have appointments all day long, every day. Uh, they're also paying for meals and ground fare while we're in Canada. Our public and private partnership, if you see those folks, give them a hand, because they're paying for my airfare and hotel stays, so no cost to the county. We've got the best story to tell in the state, we're gonna go to Canada, and we're gonna tell the story to all the prospecting companies that we, we talked to. Finally, if I can just take the liberty, uh, someone called me today to ask me to mention this, I wrote out there two weeks ago, Robbie had called me and told me to go look, uh, on I-95, Conbrace is, with this, uh, state-of-the-art billboard. And if you go out there now, uh, I think it shows a hundred and forty-four times a day, I was told, but it's our Dillon County sign, it's live on ninety-five, so it's digitally broadcasted, and so if you, C Connor, thank you for doing that, that's, that's no cost. That's mine.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ten, ordinance, ten A, third reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Dillon County, South Carolina, and a company or companies known to the county at this time as Project Unique, with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such properties will be subject to certain payment in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related thereto.
Uh, council, this is great news, we're looking to make another announcement here. Uh, I would, I would, Department of Commerce called me this week, I think we'll probably make this announcement hopefully within a month. Uh, Project Unique, we, uh, the special source credit revenue was very, very minimal, as we're all very sensitive to now, being the port is our incentive, but it was fifteen percent just for five years, you know, we've drawn them out to thirty years, but this is just a five years, so, uh, I applaud council for kind of holding your guns on our incentive. But this is the third reading on Project Unique.
Requires a motion?
I'll make that motion.
For the second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor? Any vote? Ten B, third reading, an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial business park of Dillon and Marlboro County, so as to enlarge the park.
Uh, so many folks will misunderstand this, this is not a partnership, third, third, and third with, with any county, this is the one percent going to Marlboro, so that we may make it a multi-county park, which makes us eligible, uh, for, for various things that we can issue. One of them is the Economic Development Fund.
Requires a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Need a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor? Any vote? Ten C, second reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract sale and convey approximately twelve-point-seven-eight acres of land with improvement thereon, as shown on a plat, a plat recorded in the office of the clerk, of court for Dillon County and plat booked twenty-eight at page one forty-three. TMS zero four zero dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero three two for the amount of four hundred fifty-two thousand dollars, and authorizing conveyance of said twelve-point-eight acres pursuant to the terms of said contract. Requires a motion?
Gentlemen, you'll see also that you have the, the ordinance before I pass it out to you, and a copy of the contract. Which will be attached to it.
And of course, we've got one more reading on this, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, it may be that we have a, since we have the public here, and it may be that we have a called meeting next month, if this, if council's able to entertain that, uh, not a date at this time, but the perspective, buyer is anxious to, to buy at this time.
Requires a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A motion? Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any vote? Ten D, second reading, authorizing the assurance of, and sale of not exceeding, uh, one million dollar general obligation bonds in one or more series of Dillon County, South Carolina, fixing the form and details of the bond, providing for the payment of the bond, authorizing the chairman of county council, county administrator to determine certain matters related to the bond, providing for the payment of the bond, disposition of the proceeds of bonds, and other matters relating thereto. Requires a motion?
Make the motion, we pass a second.
Now, motion, need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any vote? Ten E, first reading, an ordinance to amend ordinance number twelve dash oh seven, providing for the closing or demolition of dwellings unfit for human habitation.
Mr. Chairman, I, I can't remember which committee, what are you, the?
Public Safety Committee.
Public Safety Committee, met, uh, last, last week or maybe two weeks ago, uh, in thoughts of aligning our policy more like the cities, which would maybe raise the price just a little bit on the demolition efforts, realizing that we still wanna very much focus on cleaning up this, this county. Uh, other discussion, Mr. Chairman, was that, uh, that, uh, we were gonna take care of already what was in the queue, everything that we received thus far, we were gonna take care of at the original ordinances, uh, whatever it stated, but moving forward, there was a new question that we looked at, Mr. Archie chaired that, you recall what that, was it a thousand?
Yeah, it was the minister, Mr. Chairman, but we, yeah, we said a thousand dollars that we was gonna add for the demolition, uh, of the buildings, and, and also we mentioned that if the fire department could burn it down without any problem, we would utilize the fire department, for those that, that could be burned down. It's the Recreation Public Safety Committee came, because I served as, as chair, also member of committee with the, uh, council, but, and council.
Who came up with the figures on the thousand dollars?
That's what we come up with, committee.
That, that aligned, it was actually a little less than the, uh, city, Mr. Campbell. Uh, I think the city charges, if I'm not mistaken, I wouldn't misspeak, but I want to say it was, and somebody.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen percent. Was the cost of the landfill.
The cost of the landfill. We're waiving the cost of the landfill, simply because you really can't tell a person what's that, like, what it's gonna cost. So we'll give them a, a concrete number before it takes, before they, uh, before our work takes place.
The problem I got with that, my people down there, you know, my district, want a house to go down, and they can't afford to pay a thousand dollars, then that mean their house gonna sit there. I think me and Scott talked about it, at least, I would be in favor of, of at least burning the house. I mean, if we burn the house, then it, it shouldn't cost them a thousand dollars, but just to tell them they're gonna have to come up with a thousand dollars, I don't, I don't, well.
And you're telling them, they're not convinced you burned the house because somebody else's house, they're too close, and somebody else's house probably catch on fire.
Fire department can do it for recreation.
Yeah, but they can't, that's what they can't do for a lot of buildings.
I gotta take care of my people, but anyway, we'll, we'll cross that bridge, we get.
And I think what we looked at too, though, council, we, we wanted it to be user-friendly, and we looked at it from that aspect, but there's no art, it says that a house has to be torn down. It's not like that we putting a mandate on this, you know, and I think we giving it the option under this office, this, this option.
And the, the full, the full ordinance, I'll have drafted for the second reading, so that, you know, any changes need to be done, this is by title only, so any changes need to be, and, and I'll just, if I could interject this to Mr. Chairman, that, you know, the, the initial cost is, is a, y'all, y'all know it's bottleneck right now at my office, trying to get these title examinations out. It, it costs between a hundred and three hundred dollars sometimes to get these searches done, that's before you even lift the first, you know, rock on the property. And that's the cost of the chance payments, uh, upfront before you even get started.
Requires a motion?
No motion.
Got a motion, need a second?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor? Any vote? Number eleven, a German. Requires a motion?
I'll make that motion, we're a German.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any vote?